We'll go ahead and open the March Beaver Creek Planning Commission, March 6, 2024. The first item on our agenda would be the call.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Mr. Self is absent. Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Ayers, motion to excuse Mr. Self?
Mr. Tryad, second.
We'll do that by general consensus. Next item on our agenda is the approval of last month's agenda for February. Any changes or additions? All right, I'll need a motion.
Mr. Ayers, motion to approve the February Planning Commission meeting minutes?
Mr. Tryad, second.
That will do that by general consensus. And the last item before we have our public hearing would be the approval of the agenda as written.
Mr. Tryad, move to approve the agenda as written?
Mr. Ayers, second.
That will do by general consensus. Yes. All right. The one and only item we have on our agenda, I'm assuming that's why everybody's here today, is going to be a public hearing. It's PUD 23-4, Race Track Dayton rezoning case. This case was tabled at the February, January, and December meetings, I believe. So I guess first course of action is we would need a motion to untable.
Mr. Tryad, move to untable PUD 23-4?
Mr. Ayers, second.
And we'll do that by general consensus. Yes. Okay. So this is a public hearing, so we are going to be hearing from both the applicant and the city in regards to this. This is a rezoning case, so there are some details that are included in the packet that are a little bit extra beyond the actual zoning that we're actually talking about here today. So just kind of keep that in mind. Any of those items would be addressed at the specific site plan if it would move forward. So with that, I will take a staff report. Oh, Melissa, did we have any written input? Oh, read the case, sorry.
This is case number PUD 23-4 on an application filed by Dinsmore &amp; Scholl LLP, 255 East 5th Street, 1900 Cincinnati, Ohio 45202. The application requests approval to rezone 16.7 acres from PUD B-398 to a C-PUD Commercial Plan Unit Development. The property is located at the southwest corner of US 35 and Factory Road, further described as Book 6, Page 16, Part of Parcel 1 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you very much. With that, could we hear from the applicant? And if you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Can everybody hear me, or is the mic not on? Could you hear me in the back? Okay. I know. Great. Thanks, Randy. I'll leave it alone. First of all, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. And thanks, old citizens that have shown up too. I know it's an important issue for them. My name is Richard Trantor. I'm an attorney with Dinsmore &amp; Scholl, and I'll be speaking tonight on behalf of the applicant with respect to this request to rezone or modify the existing PUD. With me tonight, I have Zachary Sen and Brendan Sexton with Race Track, which is the proposed user of the facility. Also Kyle Rentmore and Gene Hartline with Manic Smith, who are engineers. For those, I know in front of me, you understand that this is the Stage 1 of the zoning application. And I may say some of these things also for the benefit of the audience so that they understand we're in a two-step process, and tonight is merely to consider the rezoning of the existing PUD to effectively another PUD which actually accepts the same uses that are already permitted. And that's something I'll go into some detail. And hopefully this will provide some clarity and maybe some food for thought for people that are considering this or have attended tonight. We're here tonight to request the modification, rezoning of an approximate 16-acre portion of the existing PUD B-398, PUD that was created June 29, 1981. The existing commercial uses, which include a vehicular service station, and I may use the letters VSS just to make it simple, have been permitted as of right since 1981, if not earlier. Because the original PUD in '81 was actually based on a B3 and B4 zone districts. And right now, as I understand it, the existing PUD is supporting the B3 uses only. By our application, we are merely codifying the uses that are already permitted in identifying a permitted use, a singular one, vehicular service station for the purposes of a future site plan, which would be the Stage 2 application. Typically, a Stage 1 application is not accompanied by this level of detail, but it was provided for purposes of transparency to allow discussion of future access concerns. But it was not provided to be a basis to preclude otherwise permissible uses, and I'll get into that in my presentation. In brief, our presentation addresses the imposition of conditions. Eliminating truck traffic to our site is embodied by paragraphs 8 and 5 of the draft resolution that's before you tonight. I should note that an earlier draft had not included paragraph 5, which is a complete prohibition of truck fueling and parking even if not a primary use. And that word "primary" is going to be very significant in our discussion tonight. Now, before I start, I do want to compliment Randy Burkett and the administration. I'm a little long in the tooth here in terms of age and experience, and I've dealt with a lot of communities. You have a very professional staff, and I do want to compliment Randy on that. He communicates openly, and it is very prompt in responses. So any disagreements I have with Randy tonight are purely policy-oriented. But I do appreciate the good attention that you've given to the application. It speaks well for the community, and I have felt, we have felt welcomed as a business, possible business entry to your community. Now with that, I'm going to hopefully get this thing started here. Okay. And it's the bottom side? Okay. So I have prepared approximately about a 19, 20-page slide presentation. I'll go through it as briefly as I can. And if, for any reason, you have a question or want to stop me at a slide, please just raise your hand, or I'll anticipate if you have questions maybe at the end. But I'm going to move through the slide deck until I see somebody stop me on a question. So... Who's Race Track? Race Track is a family-oriented business. It was founded in 1934, and it currently employs over 10,000 team members. It has a total of over 560 stores, and it is a non-franchise business. Race Track wishes to participate in the communities that it is situated, and it has very nice philanthropic goals. You know, of course, Michael J. Fox is a well-known foundation, but they also do Feed America and Boys and Girls Clubs. An interior look of a prototype of a Race Track fueling station and convenience store. The principal building is a building of 6,000 square feet, which houses a convenience store and also serves food. Now, the history of the site, which is very important, I think, for everybody to understand why I may take such a strident position on our zoning rights, is that the site is currently under a 1981 PUD, which its uses are B3 uses. And initially, it was thought it was going to be a shopping center. And that did not pan out for the current, or the owners. And so as a result, the PUD has stayed in place. But because we are coming in with a specific configuration and use, we were advised by staff the best way to come in was to seek a specific rezoning, which is what we're doing to a commercial PUD. But for everybody, particularly in the audience, it's so important for everyone to understand, our use is already a permitted use, and it's been a permitted use since 1981 or earlier. In fact, probably the people behind me that are from Sky Crossing may or may not realize that their subdivision was part of the same PUD to which I'm applying for a rezoning. In fact, theirs was a radical departure from the '81 PUD because it was for single-family housing. And the, on the overlay to the left, you can see the Sky Crossing development as it will develop out. But that was a rezoning, actually, of the 1981 commercial PUD. Moving forward about 40 years, the 2020 Beaver Creek Land Use Plan, which is consistent, which is still applicable, has designated this area as a mixed use, which would include, again, commercial. And when I use that term "commercial," I'm using the term also to say it would include the permitted uses. And so the Land Use Plan, VPA 92, identifies the subject property also as one of the largest future development areas in the city. So I know it's important to the city how this parcel evolves. And, but the purpose of the slide is to show that we are consistent with the land use plan for the application before you. In the Land Use Plan 2020 Beaver Creek Goals and Objectives, we would fit under probably the neighborhood commercial office. And they specifically identify gas stations as a convenient service business that would be encouraged in this type of land use plan. So in 2021, a developer, residential developer, sought a rezoning for part of this former shopping center site, as I had said. So recently, relatively recently, about 80 of the 160 acres was sought for rezoning to PUDR, which was to obviously change the zoning from commercial to residential. There was no change at that time in the PUD, either in the use identification or the definitional identification of a vehicle service station. Again, created in '81, there's a relook in 2021, and the existing PUD that is left, of which we are part of that 80 acres that's left, there was still no change in the idea that it's intended to be part commercial and that the vehicle service station use was still a permitted use. And that was in 2021. Then, this is a Beaver Creek zoning staff report, site composition. And again, some things to emphasize on this slide which are important. That entire orange area technically could be commercial, retail. But in conversations with staff, they suggested to us, if you go in for the rezoning, we would like you to consider splitting that 16 acres and, in effect, making about seven of the acres commercial and the remaining nine, commercial office. In other words, in the world of zoning, as we are thinking of it, retail is a more intense use than office. So they were trying to stagger and put a transitional district in between the retail. So in effect, by this zoning application, we are, we being Race Track, we are agreeing voluntarily to limit the extent of the retail to that nine acres. And we are agreeing with staff that the bottom acreage, the bottom nine acres, I should say, could be some other commercial use such as office. And so for the people that are listening to this, this is actually a very reduced zoning application because we are not trying to zone or codify the entire 16 acres for retail. We're actually not that ambitious. We're just seeking the most appropriate retail is that upper seven acres at the intersection, basically a factory and US 35. And we're willing to agree, because that's how it has to happen, by our application, it's a stipulation that the bottom nine acres would be office. And I, we thought that was a good idea by staff. Again, Race Track has considered it, and so we're willing to accept that as a site composition, provided we get our zoning. This is what the site plan looks like. Now, again, in a normal Stage 1 rezoning, you would not have this level of detail. But because Race Track obviously is the user, we were able to provide this level of detail. So there would be no mystery as to the layout of the store, 6,000 square feet, principal building. There are auto and truck dispensers for the fuel, and how it would lay out, and proposed access points. And then part of the actual discussion was an extended driveway to come down to Shaker Town. And you can't see it there, but that, there's a driveway on the left there that goes all the way down. And you can see on the left side, you've got a sort, it's truncated, but there's that access drive that comes all the way down to Shaker Town. And again, we have our traffic expert here, and there's real merit to that for many purposes, which all are subsumed under the idea of public safety, to have some relief instead of forcing it all onto Factory Road. And that, that's quite an extensive driveway to service that facility. So to just give some perspective, if anybody on Planning Commission is not aware of it, from the center of the truck dispensaries to the nearest residential district is about a little, is over 1,680 feet. And then from the dispensary, and that's to the Sky Crossing neighborhood. And then to the other neighborhood known as Tara Falls, it's about 2,300 feet. Those are significant distances. Because in the world I grew up with zoning, usually you talked about adjacency, or you would talk about something within 200-foot, maybe 500-foot radius. Here, we're over 1,600 feet, and we're over 2,300 feet. And I think that'll be important because I know, having reviewed some of the letters, I do think there are some claims that I don't think are valid with respect to noise or pollution or anything of the like. And I bring that up because I have been involved with sound studies, and most sound will dissipate after about probably 500 to 1,000 feet. But that is something that I'm not intending to argue here. That could be a final site plan issue, if that still is an issue. But the point is simply, I know from the letters you're going to get testimony on that, and I don't want to hide that fact, but you do have to recognize that distance. Okay. The staff report is this slide. And my disagreement is going to be on condition 5, which prohibits all truck traffic. That was a new condition that came out. One of the reasons why I asked for the continuance because we got the staff report fairly close to the night. And that took us by surprise because that completely went after our use, our permitted use. What we thought we had been discussing primarily was access to Factory Road by truck traffic or Factory Road or Shaker Town truck access. So I appreciate that you allowed the continuance because we had to significantly revisit our analysis of the site when paragraph 5 came in. The issue and the debate that may occur tonight is, are we a truck stop? And we adamantly state we are not a truck stop in any manner. The fact that we have dispensaries for truck fueling, the fact that trucks may occur and come onto our site for the restaurant purposes or for the dispensary purposes, that is different than your definition. A truck stop is defined as an establishment that is engaged, and this is the key word here, primarily in the fueling or parking of truck tractors. That facility that I showed you, there are more auto dispensers. The sales figures, which are proprietary, but I am allowed to disclose this, the auto fuel sales are significantly higher than the truck sales. The parking is less than the auto. And the vehicular movement, and again, I can have our person come up, at a peak hour, peak hour, it's 10 trucks in, 10 trucks out. For, peak hour for automotive, it's over 200 cars. So it is not a truck stop as you're thinking of it, as you may have seen it on 75 when you're going south. And I don't want to use brand names, but that, that is not the Race Track facility that is in front of you. The Race Track facility that is in front of you is what has occurred between the mixture of convenience stores and gas stations over the last 40 years. If I showed you the picture of my father's gas station, it was probably an attendant coming out. He was cleaning your windshield and taking your oil change. And, you know, there was, you didn't go there to buy ice cream, or you didn't go there to buy food. But as you know, as you've evolved, UDF, United Dairy Farmers, and ice cream manufacturers, now sells a heck of a lot of gas. And on the other hand, you've got brands, and there's multiple brands, and they candidly have sort of all converged at this time in southwest Ohio. Is, and I don't have to name the brands, but they have also now, they're selling a lot of food. So it's, it's, this isn't like an anomaly. This is what has happened between gas and food over the last 40 years. And they've evolved to the point where you're going to have somewhere between a 5,000 and 6,000 square foot building, principal building, that will sell convenience items and food items, and also sell gas. And there's no difference in, in the Race Track mind between that, those significant but not primary truck traffic that is coming onto their site. The, the world has just evolved to this, and this is what the future of gas stations are going to look like. And that's why I compliment Beaver Creek because you have one of the better definitions of vehicle service station. A place where gasoline or any other vehicle engine fuel, that would include diesel, reading on, is related directly to the public on the premises, including the sale of minor accessories. And it can include a convenience store. That is probably one of the best definitions that you'll find for what's going on in this industry right now. Because that, that's where the industry is. And again, I can, I could name three brands off the top of my head, and most of them are in Dayton, the Dayton market right now. And we have them in Cincinnati, too. And it's, this is what it looks like. I just drove down past a Speedway on Fairfield, and that, that's the most different-looking Speedway I've seen. It had an incredible, if you know which one I'm talking about. It's, again, Speedway did not have that 5,000, 6,000 square foot building. All of the fueling stations are moving in this direction because people want convenience. And this isn't like Race Track is doing something that's different. They're just addressing customer needs. This is what people want to have, convenience. They want food convenience, they want mini-mart convenience, and they want to have fuel convenience. So my point on this slide is to simply say, under your own zoning code, vehicle service station, which is what was agreed to, what this facility is, which is why the conditions were put on it, is a permitted use. And it's a permitted use within the commercial zone of a B3. Just to emphasize, if you are working on a zoning case and somebody says to you, what is a truck stop? A truck stop would be, and I would not disagree with it, primarily selling truck fuel. But it would also have things like showers, laundry facilities, a truck wash, truck repair services. None of that is occurring on this site. I just note it because, again, in the world of zoning, these are sort of state, these are understood as regular definitions. Why it becomes problematic now to start excluding trucks? These are trucks that visit, I bet you, every home in any of these residential subdivisions. A Kroger, a Prime, the guy spraying the chemicals down. These are box trucks. Now, under the current definition, box trucks are excluded. So the box truck, just by example, that could not come on, come into the Race Track, is allowed to go down the streets of the subdivision, which is a bit nonsensical. But that's, that's the problem with a condition that does not recognize what a vehicle service station should be allowed to service. These trucks are already in their neighborhood. Okay. One of the other arguments that I know is going to come up, which is, is, is a red herring, quite candidly, is that the Factory and Shaker Town are somehow not, don't have capacity or not equipped to handle commercial traffic. Per the ODOT classification, these are major collectors. And this actually supports the application because you've got US 35, and these streets are important collectors for the neighborhood, and they are designed and built to handle commercial traffic. This one is really for Josh, your legal counsel. I'm just giving you some black and white law on traffic in a zoning context. Once a parcel has been determined to be applicable for commercial development, traffic is a byproduct. It is not to control the zoning. And there's reasons for that because these are public roads. Everybody's paying the taxes towards the maintenance of these roads. You cannot exclude a use just because you don't like it because it's going to generate traffic, or traffic that you may not like. It's akin to saying, oh, you know, I'm going to exclude trucks because we just don't like truck traffic. But that's a permitted use. It's like saying to a restaurant, you can't have a bar. You can serve the food, but you can't serve the liquor. You can't take the one from the other. They, the business of Race Track is, is a vehicle service station under your zoning definition. It is not a truck stop. So the applicant revised zoning resolution, if you are so disposed, I wanted to give you the exact language that I believe would pass muster, paragraph 5 should be deleted because the facility is not a truck stop. Because it does not engage primarily in the fueling or parking of trucks. Second and third sentences of paragraph 8 need to be deleted because they're prohibiting truck traffic from accessing Shaker Town Road, which candidly, that prohibition serves no public safety purpose. If you wish to have engaged discussion with the traffic engineer, she will conclude that the Shaker Town driveway access for trucks or vehicles of any sense is a very good idea for public safety. And then two, no such prohibition has ever been proposed since the inception of the applicable PUD in 1981. So the owner and the user, we are coming into Beaver Creek, having studied your zoning code, having talked to your staff, understanding your definitions, and asking you to please respect your own code because our application is actually a reduce, a reduction, will result in a reduction of retail commercial on the 16 acres. As I said before, we're not asking for the full 16. We're just asking for seven of that 16 to be rezoned, basically codified. And also ask yourself this question. If someone had come in and developed the south portion of that 16 acres, put an office in, would we really have this kind of outrage or discussion about the gas station up at the northeast corner? Because we're the first ones in, and I've been doing this for decades. When you're the first one in, you face the most opposition. And I'm, I'm happy- And I'm, I'm happy, it's great to see the community interest, but I'm hoping that the presentation clarified some facts regarding where we are, we're at stage one, it's a zoning application. We are codifying and reducing the commercial impact. This is, if they don't want retail, this is a very generous application, because it's taking nine acres off the retail development map. With that said, I just want to thank everybody and respectfully ask that you would adopt your resolution tonight's subject to these modifications. Understanding I have to come back in for phase two.
Absolutely. Appreciate, appreciate the very thorough reports, and I'm sure we will have plenty of questions for you here as they come up.
Thank you.
Mr. Burkett, your report from staff.
Do you want me to turn it off? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. I don't think my presentation will be quite as long, but I'll go forward. The case you have before you is PUD 23-4. It's a rezoning of approximately 16.7 acres. Partially, that is a current B PUD that was rezoned, as the applicant stated, back in the early 80s, and part of it is straight B3 zoning, and combine that, or carve out a piece of that, and create a new PUD in order to develop the site as a vehicle service station and convenience store. Just to get an idea where we're at, it's in the eastern, far eastern edge of Beaver Creek, just south of the intersection of Factory Road and 35. Just to go through the process, more of a informational, the PUD process is, again, a two-step process. The first step is a rezoning, which is the process we're on now, and we're here at the very beginning of the rezoning process, which is Planning Commission, and Planning Commission makes a recommendation to City Council. City Council would hear the case in two public, in a public hearing, and then make a decision at a second reading of that. And the rezoning is specifically looking at the types of uses, any conditions of densities and setbacks and things like that. The second phase, should the rezoning be approved, is where we get into details about site plan, design, architecture, traffic, architectural elevations, how the lighting and landscaping go and things like that. And then after Planning Commission makes, makes a recommendation, that goes to City Council, whether they approve the site plan or not. And then following that, then the applicant can apply for a zoning permit if that's approved. So again, we're at the very first stage of, our very first step of the two-stage process. Seen here is the 16.7 acres that they're looking to rezone. The entire site is within the FEMA floodplain, within the regulatory floodplain under FEMA. So should anything be built on this site, it would, they would have to get a floodplain permit from the city. And one of the requirements is any building, the base of any building, there's a certain elevation that establishes a floodplain. So to get a permit within the floodplain, you have to build the base of that building at least two feet above that floodplain elevation. The building itself, not parking lots and not any signs or anything like that, the building itself has to be at least two feet above that base flood elevation. I did a really quick and back-of-the-envelope calculation, and basically to build out where they're proposing to build a building, it'd be about seven feet of fill needed to raise it up to put that, that's where the building base would start. Also, near and adjacent to the site and slightly through the site is a, it's actually a national pipeline, the TEPCO pipeline that goes from Lima down to Texas, and it, it runs right to, right at the edge of this site. There is a 30-foot easement. Their first go, their, the plan that they submitted did show that easement and show that they're not going to be building any on top of that pipeline or near, within that easement, but I just want to let the Planning Commission know that it is there. This is the zoning map, and this, I'll go a little bit closer, it's kind of hard to see the red outline, but you can see half, the northern half is straight B3 zoning, and the southern half is part of that PUD 90, or 398 with a B3 underlying designation. As the applicant stated, there's a lot of uses, a lot of commercial uses that are currently allowed on the site. And this is a, kind of a small sample that includes, you know, convenience stores and bars and restaurants, and vehicle, vehicle service stations. They are permitted use within this current zoning that's on site, so we're not, we're not disputing that at all. The land use plan has the area designated as mixed use, and it's also within vacant planned area 92. With vacant area plan 92, the, the specific language states that residential should be in the southwest corner and slowly transition and be as a buffer between the more intense office and commercial uses in the northeast corner. And mixed use as a definition is developments that provide a full range of commercial and office and residential uses, so it's just as it implies, it's a mixture of commercial, residential, and office. This is the site plan, well, it's, it's a concept, really detailed concept plan that the applicant has provided for this evening, and as the applicant stated, we typically don't have this much design or this much detail on a concept plan. This is kind of an overview to get the full view of how they're proposing to build the site and how it attaches to Shakertown Road and Factory Road. What they're looking to do is rezone about five acres to, from the straight B3 and 11 from the PUD, and create a northern and a southern section, where the north is more commercial office and the, the south is more office in it by itself. And that's where we get that map that the applicant showed earlier, where the B3 uses should be permitted in that northern section, but then a, there's several uses that we have proposed to strike out of the B3 uses, such as bars, lawnmower sales, and body shops, repair stations, and vehicle sales and service, so car lots should not be permitted out there. In the southern section, all the O1 uses should be permitted, other than things such as amphitheaters, hotel motels, restaurants, and parking, commercial parking garages and the like, those, those should be not permitted, they're not compatible with what the, the land use plan and the zoning map, or the zoning code has for this area. I think the biggest difference in, where we're in disagreement with the applicant is the definition of, or how we have analyzed the site. We're seeing this as two separate sites pushed together as one. The south, the building and the, the gas station and vehicle service is one site, and then north of that, or well, south of that, is solely for the use of trucks. And so we're, we're saying that yes, vehicle service stations are permitted use, and we're proposing to continue that as a permitted use. What we're, what we're not, we're also saying is that truck stops, which are only permitted in industrial districts under the zoning code, is not compatible with the commercial office designation that we have in the mixed use language and in VPA 94. Just their own plan that they submitted, you can see there's a clear distinction of where, on the southern edge of the site, it's designed solely for trucks. It's designed so that trucks can get in, fuel, and park, and then stay is what they need to stay, and then get out. But it, and then the south end is solely for the vehicle service sales, where the, the building is kind of a, used by both. So what we're proposing is still be allowed to use the, the site as a vehicle service station, but not truck stops. And our position is that southern portion of the site that is designed for trucks, for truck parking, for truck fueling, and is a truck stop, even though it is immediately adjacent to a vehicle service center. There's also a few other conditions, such as any new buildings are subject to this second phase, this specific site plan stage. No overnight parking of any commercial, or any vehicles on site, and any buildings should be set back at least 40 feet from 35 Factory Road and Shakertown Road. And I know this is typically part of the specific site plan stage, but I wanted to address it here. When we go through a site, when we're in that second phase, we look at stormwater detention and ensure that any additional runoff that's being generated by the, by the development of a site must be accounted for when, in terms of storm, detention ponds or retention ponds or underground stormwater ponds. So they can't create a site that causes runoff to be, flow off the site any faster than it currently flows off the site. Again, that's typically at the second phase, but I know that, I've heard the concerns of of stormwater runoff and runoff from the site, so I wanted to bring that up. Also wanted to point out, in general, and this goes to everything, the city's role in development, you know, zoning is not really, it's not here to stop development. That's not the intent of zoning, it, it can't just stop development. What it can do is guide development in an orderly fashion and make sure that uses that are incompatible with each other are not adjacent to each other, such as a industrial use is not immediately adjacent to a residential use. The only way that the city could actually stop development is if we use city tax dollars to purchase land and then decide what goes on there as, as the owner. And there are a few others we don't, this is more apt to residential developments, but we don't, we can't consider school impacts and traffic impacts can only be used as a reason to stop zoning if the traffic study says that it would create a dangerous situation, and that would be something the city would have to, to produce, not just anecdotal, just because, it has to be a scientific study and show that it, it would cause a problem. So in your resolution, there are nine conditions, including a condition that truck stops not be permitted. I know the applicant had asked a few conditions to be pulled out and changed, but staff does recommend approval of the, of the applicant's request, subject to those nine conditions. I'll be here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Burkett. Appreciate that. So this is a public hearing, so everyone will give, be given the opportunity to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When you come up, please say your name and address, just so we have that for the record. If you wish to speak longer than three minutes, somebody can donate their time to you if they so choose. And then we would ask, there are a lot of you here, we're going to hear some of the same exact things kind of over and over, so kind of limit your comments to new and kind of informative comments, as opposed to kind of repeating kind of some of the same things that others have said before you. With that being said, I'll ask, I'll ask staff, we had any written input before we get started.
Yes, we did receive 85 emails, letters in opposition of the case. Commissioners were provided a copy of each of those.
Thank you. And with that, who's going to be the, the first person up? You just walk up to the podium here, please say your name and address for the record.
My name is John Broughton. I live at 4243 Walbridge Trail, and I was serving on City Council when all this came up. So I'm, you know, it's been a few years, but my memory is the B3. I would also like, I didn't intend to speak more than three minutes, but some of the things I heard, so I'd like to have my, my wife would like to relinquish her three minutes to me, just in case.
We'll, we'll just have to have her come up and give her, her name and address, once, if and when you run over the three minutes.
Okay. Like I said, I served on City Council when this came up, and the key here is, it's a gas station. We had a lot of reasons, we, we were looking at it from there all the way back to where the township comes in, where the houses, all the way back there by the sewage plant, all that bare land. We, we, we addressed everything there. It was a big issue, that's one of the reasons I even remember it, plus I go back to when the mall was there. I've been here a long time, and the mall, the citizens just came apart. The mall ended up moving to Fairfield Mall. That's what it is. Now, I will say that one, at least one thing that the applicant said was praising Randy and his staff, I agree totally, since we hired him. So, so that site, when we addressed it, was gas station. Like, like the staff said, you can't adjust things for traffic and things like that. And the development, we, we looked at every issue. Of course, the biggest issue is the fact that that land has historically, as far back as I can remember, has had contamination of some form. That hasn't changed a lot. I think you received an engineer's study that's pretty up to date, that said that it was still vulnerable for that kind of problem. I don't know that they ever fixed it, but we did address it. It was the best way we could come down to, to get this. Now, the applicant also stated about noise. I don't know where he lives, but I'd challenge anybody that ever lives anywhere in Beaver Creek that can't hear a truck going down our highway. We're surrounded by highways. Motorcycles, so I don't know where he lives, and I've, and I've traveled all over the country. In fact, I worked my way through school driving a truck. Well, actually, my sister owned the company, so, but, so I, I know what it's like when they downshift. Again, you can't control that with zoning. But we specifically said gas, not fuel. You need the wife?
Wife likes to donate her time.
Come on, Joe.
Joe Broughton, 4243 Walbridge.
Speak into the mic, please.
Joe Broughton, 4243 Walbridge Trail, donate my time.
Thank you so much.
So there were so many things on the applicant, I mean, all you have to do is get your CB rec, uh, radio. You'll hear truck drivers go down there, and they will say, well, there's a truck stop down the street. He can call it anything he wants, it's a truck stop. That's just what it is. Attached to a gas station. Any truck driver will tell you, if you run out of fuel, you can pull in there, and that's it. Now, you can't have overnight stay, but who's going to enforce it? Are they going to put a time clock in there? Because otherwise, we have to put police officers in there marking it, and it's not going to happen. So that's a mute issue. The only way we can do it is to keep it a gas station. Now, I would recommend that they keep it the way we studied it. I mean, there was no rock we didn't turn over. And I would recommend that the Planning Commission keep it the way we had it. There were so many months of this going over and over. It wasn't a meeting here and a meeting there. There were work sessions and a lot of things that went on. And like I said, I've been involved with the history with this property, well, all of Beaver Creek, since before we were a city, and we definitely have a problem with that site. So I would hope that you would keep the citizens in, in your thoughts and understand just how sensitive this is to the citizens. Again, I realize that has not necessarily how planning is done, but we addressed that, and for you to change it would go directly against its citizens, even though they didn't even know we were doing it. But that's what we did, because we're citizens. So I thank you for listening and hope you do what we would like to see done.
Chuck Brackenoff, 2823, Maggen Drive, Beaver Creek. A couple of things. I've served on the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission for 10 years, and yes, we do see this detail on the stage one, so that is not unwarranted. They may not be a better, but we do see that. On the slide the applicant had, 1,681 feet is misleading, they need to stop going from the middle of the property, they need to go from where the truck is going to be parked to where the closest house is, so we can understand the new subdivision. And they've been playing on words, and maybe we should play on words, too. So I like what the staff did on theirs, but maybe instead of saying truck, we should restrict semi tractor-trailers from going in there, because everything you see on there, everything you see on the map, as it was explained, it's for semi truck to get in there and turn around, and we all know that's what we're trying to talk about. In the City of Beaver Creek zoning website, you said there cannot be any restrictions unless it has some type of substantial relationship to public health, safety, and general welfare. So anything we come up with, we have to make sure addresses that. Traffic study is not, general welfare and safety of that road is. I asked, Beth, we asked the applicant, what is on the yellow brick road, and he uses that, they probably could not tell us. And that is soccer moms, soccer dads, soccer grandparents. When I went through the applicant itself, I see a storm detention on that map, and that's on here. That was not discussed or anywhere. When you raise it up seven feet, you're going to put flooding everywhere else around the When you raise it up seven feet, you're going to put flooding everywhere else around the adjacent neighborhoods. On the staff report itself, I do like it, by the way, it's very detailed, I like it. It shows in there the floodplain, take the current zoning, it tells you what is current zoning. I like that. It went into a lot of detail of why we shouldn't do it. The land use plan, this violates land use plan, and we're governed by the land use plan. So that was pointed out in there. The VPA 92 says it's being violated. So why are we even looking at this truck stop? Let's call it a semi trailer trucks pulling in, getting gas and parking, running their engines all the time. That is what this is. The applicant can play on words, a truck stop, but that's not what this is. I recommend that if we're going to do anything, is that we change the verbiage here on the recommendation to include that, take the truck out and make it so they can't. If they don't change it, here's what happens. So this is stage one. If city council approves this, we have the final say-so. The state of Ohio allows us to have a public referendum to overturn the rezoning. If this goes on to the stage two, then there's nothing we can do about it. So you need to understand that this is the first of many stages, but we will have the final say-so. 10% voters, put on public referendum, and we can vote this down. Thank you for your time.
And just a point of order, real quick. We appreciate everybody's enthusiasm, but you can see how many people are here right now. If we clap for everybody as we're getting through, we're going to be here until 1:00 in the morning. So, we appreciate, we totally appreciate the enthusiasm.
My name is Brian Jarvis, live at 825 Timberwood Drive in Beaver Creek City. I gave you a presentation, we'll move through it quickly to hit my three-minute mark, but in 2021, US 35 Super Street opened to traffic. It had its purpose. It was to improve efficiency, safety, and those were primarily, the purpose is there. It was the only aggregate intersection between here and I think, besides Trebine Road, West Virginia, going all the way out. When the US 35 was opened, the public was not very happy with all the stop signs, loons, and things like that. But we, who were in office then, I was the former mayor of the city back in 2014 and 2015, we took the heat because we knew it was temporary. It was not permanent. We understood that eventually a full overpass would be built right there, at that intersection. Similar design is what's going on Woodman Drive and 35 right now, very similar to that. And that nothing would be done to interfere with putting a full overpass right there. If you look at your next page, the green page, this is the page from the state of Ohio's presentation to us. It has its GRE number, it's on their website, you can look at it and find it there, the PID number. On the second page of the presentation, this was an interim solution, the Super Street project. It served its purpose, it was cheap, but it was known that it was temporary, and we needed that space, some of what's being used right now by that stage two diagram right now. Fifth page, it says right there, interim solution, Super Street. It met the immediate purpose and need, and as the last sentence says, it performed better than the existing signals, but it was temporary until future interchange development and construction project was pursued. There was supposed to be the city going after more money, and MVRPC and others in order to build that. Page seven shows a Super Street, it's loons right there, and all the loops cover the planning study that MVRPC did and presented to everyone. There were decades of feasibility studies as to what should go there. That's on page nine of the presentation. When you consider what the understanding was between all parties, the state of Ohio, ODOT, MVRPC, Green County, Beaver Creek City, Beaver Creek Township, and the property owner, you can see that this is not compatible. If that goes there, an overpass will never, ever be built there. All future generations of Beaver Creek residents will be harmed by that. Page 11 shows side-by-side that diagram and the diagram of what the overpass was supposed to look like. You can tell right now, that entire northeast section where the building and stations are, in addition to where the ramp would have to be to come from 35 eastbound to Factory Road south, and the entrances to that facility, those cannot exist with the overpass that we know is going to build there. It's totally incompatible. It's rare, if we had had somebody on city council when I was mayor telling us what was planned to be there, we might have made different decisions back then. But the state recommended as a temporary solution, the Super Street, in order to provide a, just a traffic benefit until the real plan went in place.
Apologize, your time's up.
Your minutes. Okay. Don't give me three more minutes.
You can come up to the mic and give your name and address, please.
Ellie Duskin, 2246 Emmondale Place.
Thank you.
I can slow down some now. With the elevation that the Factory Road overpass would be over 35, the slope coming down towards Yellow Brick Road on Factory would far exceed the Coyote Canyon area there, and there would be no opportunity for any entrances at all. If you notice on Trebine Road, the overpass at 35, how far it goes north over Kenny Shelton Businesses' property. If you looked at 35 near Woodman Drive, Woodman Drive is real high, it goes down towards Eastman, where Spinning Hills Middle School is, you're going to need some space. That slope would end just before the road widens at Yellow Brick Road and Shakertown Road. In addition, the plan is to put bike paths, so kids can bike to those soccer fields from the bike paths just north of 35, on both sides, one to go to the soccer field, the other side to go to the residences that are on that side. This plan totally blows away decades and decades and decades of work that have been put into this. Everyone who I listed, including the property owner, knew that this was planned. You have a chance today to make a difference. You can either vote one way which will harm Beaver Creek residents, both township and city, and everyone who traverses that land, bicyclists, kids, families, runners, pedestrians, or you can make a choice that is benefiting all of us. Please make it a good choice. I hope you turn down this request. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Paul Roderick Jr. I live at 3210 Tarleton, and I just have a few comments I want to make. The other folks have made comments that were very thoughtful and stole my thunder. I would like to reiterate that this is a truck stop and a gas station is what's being proposed. And I think the logic of the Denzmore Shoal Attorney, who has paid, I'm sure, a lot of money to come here and dress this up in a pretty format for everyone, was that 200 cars per hour and 20 trucks per hour would be the distinction, and so it was primarily a gas station, not primarily a truck stop. Well, my first reaction to that is 200 cars an hour in this particular location? That's an awful lot of cars at an already dysfunctional roadway, aside from the issue with the trucks. But I also ask you, everybody in this room is old enough to remember Riverfront Stadium. There were 81 baseball games a year played in Riverfront Stadium. There were eight football games a year played there. Was that a football stadium, or was that a baseball stadium? And it was both, just like this proposal is both, a truck stop and a, and a gas station. I live not far from this location. I will tell you, I can hear 35 from my back porch. I live in Terra Estates. I can hear the high school, the high school band, marching band, which is pretty, pretty noise, if you will, but it's far away. I can hear Kill Care. When I was a kid, I'd look up and I could see stars. I can't see stars anymore. I lived in the same neighborhood when I was a kid. We also have light pollution. This would add to that as well. So, yeah, this is the kind of thing that does not match the, I don't think, the idea of a neighborhood so close to it. It's not something that should be that close to a neighborhood, should not be that close to soccer fields, it should not be that close to a bike path, it should not be in a floodplain. It's the kind of thing that causes problems with all that, and it should not be on that dysfunctional stretch of roadway, where I can envision semis trying to make the loops and turnarounds to come into this establishment. Thank you very much.
Hi. Andrew Morris, 2888 Hickory Knoll Drive. I don't really live that close to here. The reason I wanted to say something was my wife and I lived in Maryland for a number of years, and we worked in a commercial area where a lot of trucks would park overnight. And that's really our concern, is that with, doesn't matter how many no parking signs you put up, there's going to be tractor-trailers when they don't fit in the parking lot, they're going to be parked along the driveway, they're going to be parked along the streets. And when we would go for walks at lunchtime, because we worked right near there, you were greeted with signs on, of litter everywhere, but it wasn't just litter. You know, think of quart bottles filled with urine, condoms. We would see prostitutes getting out of trucks in the morning. You know, I'm not an anti-trucker, but I don't think that kind of thing belongs next to the soccer fields. And we just wanted to, you know, we're here tonight to say, we live in Green County, and we don't want to see that near our neighborhood. Gas station's okay, truck stop is what it's going to be, we don't want to see that. So, thank you.
I'm Mary Lou Hopin, 699 Brookmead Court, here in Beaver Creek, and I am going to go over my three minutes, and I have two volunteers to donate three minutes each. Thank you.
Steve Hane, 2811 Stone Mill Court, I donate my time.
Donnie Collins, 2845 Red Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. So, good evening. Thank you for hearing us out, planning commission members, Beaver Creek City officials, and thank you so much for all the folks that showed up tonight. I'm going to give a little overview, just as Race Track did, so folks have some background here, and then I'll hit up my rezoning issues. So I'm speaking up on behalf of myself, my family, and many others who asked me to speak up, because they feel that their input will not be taken seriously. So, I'm speaking up on their behalf. Rezoning and developing this very environmentally fragile parcel is, is a very, you know, inappropriate plan. I've spoken with dozens of environmentalists, and all of them are alarmed about this, and I will hit up some of their concerns. I'm president of Terra Falls Homeowners Association, not too far away, but I'm not here as a quote nimby, not in my backyard. And I will show you some, we have some graphs for you that show where all our responses came as we polled people as to these, their opposition. So over the years, a lot of folks, including me, I've been here 23 years with my family, we chose Beaver Creek where we wanted to, you know, set down roots and raise, and raise our families because of great things like parks, the awesome soccer fields, waterways, the Narrows, good house size lots, you know, proximity to the bike and hike path over there, the one that goes over Green County. But, you know, 23 years, and here we are, we've just noticed a steady progression of, you know, charming old historic houses being torn down, and a third tire repair place in a quarter mile being put there instead. We look at floodplains and wetlands that are just being filled in all the time, like this is like, oh, nothing. Well, floodplains are there for a reason. They have to absorb water, they support wildlife. They're not just fillable at the disposal of whoever wants to put something on top of that. Commercial developers, often out of chain, out of state, such as Race Track, they look at Beaver Creek demographics, and they envision the profits they will make. They come into town, tear out hundreds of acres of forest, and they build yet another mattress factory, or, you know, as many of the other types of things, like a gas station. Beaver Creek residents don't need or want a duplication of these things every, you know, quarter mile. We have plenty of them already. There are already two convenience store gas stations serving both east and westbound, Route 35, a half a mile. They're half a mile from this proposed site. The developers come in, they do these projects, and then the taxpayers are left after they roll out to supposedly approved tax levy after tax levy after tax levy. Why? Our schools are overcrowded because they just keep building, and we need to have more schools built and expanded. We are getting taxed to, for road improvements. This is happening every single election to support the wear and tear of the additional improvements on our roadways from all these commercial and residential developments. Our fire and police departments are stretched too thin, all the same reasons. And this is, the neighbors are speaking up here, because they don't want this anymore. They are tired of this trend of deep-pocketed developers coming into the area and threatening municipalities like the City of Beaver Creek with lawsuits if they don't get their way. It just reminds me like of a two-year-old throwing a tantrum. I want what I want, and I want it now, and if you don't give it to me, I'm going to throw a fare. And it's just a grown-up version of that. There's a common misconception that Ohio is filled with simplistic country bumpkins. I can't tell you how many people I've told, I live in Ohio, and they laugh at me. Well, that's not true. Beaver Creek especially is filled with talented tradesmen, hard-working professionals, technology innovators, and retirees who have served their community for decades and just want Beaver Creek to be a habitable, pleasant place to live as it used to be, and is gradually moving towards not being that way anymore. So, hit up some of the environmental issues. The parcel is 100% FEMA floodplain, which means it's soggy soil that doesn't absorb water runoff. So, you can put as many detention ponds and curbing and everything you want on this, runoff is going to happen. Rains, the heavy downpours we have here occasionally, they don't cooperate and just go towards a detention pond somewhere on the property. In Terra Falls, we actually, our property, our common property is right across from Beaver Creek Wetland, one of the Beaver Creek Wetlands properties. In those heavy rainstorms, water pours over Shakertown Road because the nothing, we have detention ponds, they can't even absorb it fast enough. The detention ponds don't even hold up. Water pours over Shakertown Road into the wetlands on the other side. Some people have mentioned, we've got to bring in seven feet of fill. Fill is very unstable. How long is it going to take to compact that fill so that it actually supports this? And then we have the underground gas tanks. You know, you can read numerous articles where Race Track, there's a corporation in general, has had leaks into these floodplains from their underground gas tanks. Now, you can't guarantee that by the time the, the leaks are detected, it doesn't matter. We're right across the street from the Beaver Creek and the little Miami River, which just goes a couple hundred yards down the street, and you're next to the soccer fields. So, the soccer fields a couple of years ago had this, you know, something infest something and got into the soil, and they had to shut the soccer fields down because it killed all the grass. And they had to relocate all their, it was just a surface thing, but they had to relocate. They've got regional soccer teams, they've got local soccer teams. We cannot have hazardous waste runoff or underground gas contamination get into right across the street, like right across the street into our rivers and feed up by our soccer fields. That's disastrous. Okay. Hazardous waste. So as a gentleman mentioned, there's, and I talked to Randy Burkett about this, there's a hazardous waste already easement on that property. There's contamination from across the street on the, on the other side of Factory, north of 35. They've had things that Duncan Oil and Delaney Oil, some years past, the EPA made them remove their underground storage tanks because they, of the potential for contamination and aging. The EPA now makes Duncan Oil, which is a very big business on Factory Road, go to the Dayton Terminal to get their product, to bring right back here to Beaver Creek, to fill fuel oil. Why don't we think this is, this is, of course, is potentially what's going to happen here? The contamination gets discovered, and by then it's too late. The other thing about, there was an alano, huge alano contamination of the soil and the wastewater, is, so, the base flood elevation on the north side of Factory Road, north of 35, their base flood elevation is a foot higher than this parcel's, and why, than the south side, this parcel. A foot higher, and what does that? the, the south side, this parcel, a foot higher, and what does that mean? That means that because all the downstream parcels and all the fill that's been put in there, floodplains can only absorb a certain amount of water. The downstream areas are already saturated. So, when flooding happens north of Route 35, places like the lovely community of Alpha, they're more flood prone because they're already a foot higher and less absorbent. Let's hit up the hazardous pipe, pipeline there. So that's a-
Unfortunately, your nine minutes are up.
Okay.
I really do appreciate that.
Okay, I have a handout.
You can have my time if you want to continue.
Unfortunately, you can only, we can only do two continuations for a total of nine.
One for the city and everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Denise Moore, I've just been listening to everything you're talking about, and you said the property is a FEMA floodplain. Has any environmental studies been done on that piece of property? Has-
So we will, the, when you guys are talking, we write down a lot of these questions and we will be asking the applicant in the city of a bunch of very detailed questions, so whatever your concerns are, we try and turn them into questions then for the applicant in the city.
Okay, well that was, would be a question, and then across Shakertown Road, that is a wetland in there, and there's already a culvert that goes underneath the road that drains right into there, so whatever's coming off of there is going to go in there. And I know it sounds, you know, real tree-huggy or whatever, but there's critters that live around here, and we push them out and out and out, and that's one of the very few places that they have that they could still, still go to. And so, you know, that upsets me too. So, that was just my question. I want to make sure that it's environmentally safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jim Amon, I'm from 2504 Cold Springs Drive in Beaver Creek. Also, I'm representing not only myself, but the Beaver Creek Wetlands to some extent. I'm, I'm a scientist, I've studied this kind of thing for a long time, and I've been doing it for the Beaver Creek Wetlands for almost 36 years now. So, my, my main concern here is, is that we have a floodplain, and the floodplain shouldn't by principle be filled in. And we talked about that in the, in the plans made long, long, long ago to protect those floodplains. The floodplains are not just all by themselves, they're, they're over an aquifer. We drink water from that aquifer, and that's, that's a big concern. That water also goes into the Beaver Creek Wetlands and comes out as springs. And if it's full of whatever comes out of gasoline or the truck spills or whatever, it's, it's not a good thing. It's as simple as that. The soils there, I, I looked this afternoon, Green County Soil Study, this is 1977, '78 study, but it's still online. It's, it shows that the soils there, mainly three different kinds of soils, are relatively high in water capacity and fairly permeable. Permeable means that the water can travel through them and into that aquifer. That's a big deal. Now, as far as retention ponds come, I, I find that silly, because if you put a retention pond, when do you need a retention pond? When things are flooding. Well, if it's flooding and you put a retention pond there, it's already filled before it's needed to be used. It's just, you know, you're, you're putting water into an already full pot, it's going to overflow, it's not going to work. And you, so you've lost the floodplain. If you, if you lose a floodplain, it goes downstream, it, it causes all kinds of havoc down, down there. We have a responsibility to not only ourselves, but everybody else on that stream. I'll answer questions, that, if anybody, anytime, you can, you can find me, and I put my phone number down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Brennan, 382 North Alpha, Belrick Road. I've been there for 50 years and I've seen nothing but deterioration of roads and everything, they're not building up bigger. I don't think anything should be done until the 35 and Factory Road, it has overpass, or I have a engineer who knows what he's doing, design it, it's nothing, but my, my four-year-old can do a better job, because I used to have one red light to get across 35. Now I've got three. And to make it even better, coming back the other way from going south on Factory, I got to stop there at 35 for a full light, and you look down, the light up there is just now turning red. So I got to go up there, get a full red light there, which is kind of, kind of long, and then if I'm going down to Xenia, there's another one. And you tell me that's better? The traffic is just as bad as it was, it's, I've, you know, I've even been in an accident on 35 because of the congestion. They think that everything ought to be looked into until, nothing be done until everything can be done safely. Also, in a floodplain, I was told you cannot add any material, it all has to come from the floodplain, they can't add any more. If you add a bunch more, that means higher water on my property, which is real close to a floodplain, and I don't want to have to pay extra insurance if they, if the floodplain comes up back my property. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Leslie Boston, 2907 Stafford Drive. I just have some comments and I guess some questions. You mentioned that a traffic study needs to be done in order for any information to be valid or accepted for consideration. I am wondering whether a traffic study has been done, and just, the experience that I've had with this intersection, I don't see anything going on that corner, making it better. The first time I encountered this intersection, I was on the way to the children's hospital, had no idea how to get through it, it's not intuitive. I came up from the south, and I was a nervous wreck trying to get my child to the hospital because she couldn't breathe, and I had to turn right to go east on 35 so that I could turn around and go west. It was, it was a trying day, and it's not an intersection that I go through willingly. I avoided it at all costs. This isn't, this isn't the direction that I expected Beaver Creek to take, this particular intersection. The piece of land across the street from it there, across Factory Road, it's abandoned, I don't know what that used to even be, but nobody uses it because this intersection isn't good for a business, the traffic that's going, how on earth are semi-trucks going to turn around? Any 200 cars per hour is crazy. Turning left, you have to go through three lights. Anyone coming west would have to turn around to get to a racetrack, and then have to turn back on and turn three more times, twice more, twice more to go further west on 35. I don't know what a traffic study would say, but I, I think I know. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, Doug Ackerman, 281 Scarlet Drive, Beaver Creek. I would be interested in knowing if any studies have been done to go ahead and to look at the proposed traffic impact that all of this is going to have in context of the future plans of moving Beaver Creek High School over by the Russ Research Center at Indian Ripple up the street from there. There should be a lot of traffic that I think is going to be going through there, and there is going to have to be some significant road improvements in all to be able to handle the support, to be able to handle the high school over there. And I'd like to make sure that whatever they're planning, they're doing, or considering, would be able to be flexible enough to handle that, and would be able to support the high school being over there.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Krista Trainer Fisher, 624 Towncrest Drive, I live in Terra. I am opposed to any 24/7 business that has semi-trucks, fuel tanks, buried into a FEMA floodplain going into that area. My new friend over here had mentioned, counselor said, "Race Track is a family business." Listen to our families, listen to our residents, we are saying, please, no, we do not want that type of business in that parcel. So what I have observed in my house, we live about a mile away from 35, that intersection. There are times that the semi-trucks and the engine brakes are so loud that we hear that a lot constantly, and we have brand-new windows. I can't imagine what Sky Crossing is hearing, I, I just can't imagine, you know, the noise. Sir, you mentioned also that there's some sound study, you mentioned decibels. I don't know what that study is, but I'm going to challenge you, and I'm going to say, potentially, you're wrong. I would love to see that study, I would love to analyze it.
So, we'll, we'll give you time, we'll be asking you questions at, at the end of the public comment, so if, until then, if you could just, just let the public speak, you had your time, thank you.
So there are a lot of smart, logical people, right, that just discussed today. I really urge you all to do your due diligence, listen to us, do all the analysis, I think it's going to prove that this does not make sense. My last point is that we are starting to overdevelop this area. Case in point, last Friday, we woke up, there was a dead doe in our front yard that had been chased by coyotes, right? So we had to call the police department, the city, to come pick that up. What we're doing is we're overdeveloping, and we are running wildlife out of those areas into our safe neighborhoods, coyotes in our neighborhoods. Again, please do your due diligence. I don't want this, my husband doesn't want this. Now maybe there is a business that would make sense to go there, in my opinion, it is not what you proposed, sir, Mr. Counselor, today in your briefing. Thank you.
I'm not a resident, I'm from ODNR, I'm local scenic river manager, and I just thought I'd provide some information having to do with the effect of floodplain development and development near the Beaver Creeks on the Little Miami, yep, Aaron Rourke, I live in Springboro, my office is in Oregonia. I don't have any regulatory authority in this case, I'm here just purely for informational purposes. In general, broadly speaking, the number of species that'll live in a river corridor and the abundance of the ones that will stick around begins to decline at settlement, slowly declines to the point of 10% impervious surface in the watershed, and then there's an inflection point and a steep drop-off of the number of species. I'm not just talking about fish and the bugs that live under the rocks, I'm talking about the birds and the mammals and the lizards and the amphibians of all kinds and so forth. And right now, the Beaver Creek-Xenia corridor, well, really, Fairborn, Kettering, Beaver Creek-Xenia, is at about 30% impervious surface. So uniquely among Ohio's 15 scenic rivers, this one is not imperiled primarily by ag pollution. That would be the second layer of my concerns, but my primary concerns in maintaining the quality of this watershed are, is the stormwater runoff, and we're at ground zero, really. The, the other major impervious surface area is the Duck Creek watershed on the east side of Cincinnati, west side of, east side of Cincinnati. But see, we're way up in the watershed here, we're up near a mile 60 or 70, so what we do here influences everybody downstream. Now decisions about the wisdom of floodplain development are left to the locals, like I said, I'm here just for, just for informational purposes, but from a river point of view, we think of the entire floodplain from valley wall to valley wall and the channel as the river system. A lot of people think of just the channel as the river, but really the whole thing functions as a system. And the ecosystem services that the floodplain provides come for free, and if we try to mimic those later after development with concrete and earth moving, they prove to be relatively less effective and very expensive. So there's some wisdom in keeping the benefits that nature endowed us with. At the least, we would hope that there'd be compensatory storage if there is any floodplain fill, you're familiar with that, I'm sure. I want to acknowledge Jim Amon and his organization, and among the, the watershed groups on the main stem and the tribes, his is the oldest and probably the most effective. They've done a great deal to improve the neighborhood here, and it'd be too bad to see any deterioration of, of the gains that they've made. I hope that you can find a way to come to some kind of a collaborative agreement that does preserve the gains that generations of conservationists have, have left for you, very commendable achievements. Again, if this, if this happens, we would like to see a 120-foot buffer, that is two canopy widths of trees on both sides of the waterways. One canopy width is nothing but a fence line, and any forest-dwelling animal with any self-respect is not going to recognize that as forest and use it for migration and so forth, right? So two canopy widths is what we're looking for. We-
Do you apologize? We're here for you.
Okay. Yeah.
I'd like to donate my time.
Chan Verma, 2270 Signature Drive North.
Now the required stormwater infrastructure is generally acknowledged by folks in my business to be underfit by, according to, or for modern weather conditions. So if there's any way, and I'm showing my naivety freely here, if there's any way that you can hold development to a higher standard, I always tell people who are proposing projects along the river or its tributaries, if you can make this thing invisible from the river's perspective, that is, there is no stormwater and mud and chemical debris shed into the river, and the river never knows the developments there because all the stormwater is directed to infiltration basins, rain gardens, you may have heard them called rain gardens, and directed back into the aquifer where it was supposed to go in the first place, that's what we're looking for. In many cases, we find that there is a green buffer requirement, say, I dealt with a project that had 10% green buffer requirement. So what the developer did was make a visual buffer around the shopping center, but that 10% could have been invested in directing the, the stormwater from the parking lots to all go to, to infiltration basins populated with plants, they can be attractive amenities, just as attractive as the visual buffers. So we're, zero runoff would be the goal, and... That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my name is Bill Sheeman, I live at 5580 New Burlington Road, not currently a resident of the city of Beaver Creek, but I'm a past resident, and I've been at this podium before. I want to make a couple of points, the first one is, as you've heard Jim Amon and Mr. Rourke, we can't afford any more loss of the floodplain on the Little Miami River. It's been nibbled away at bit by bit over many decades, and the river is in trouble. So, the wildlife that lives there, the biodiversity that lives there is in big-time trouble. Ohio State did a, actually, you get people's attention when you do a financial study, in March 2022, Ohio State studied the value of the, only the upper 43 miles of the Little Miami River, because when we talk to city councils and the government, they want to say, "Well, how much is that river worth?" Bottom line is, the upper 43 miles alone are worth almost $15 million annually. You want to think what that breaks down to, that breaks down to $340,000 per river mile in total value. It needs to be protected. My next point is detention and retention calculation, okay? You've heard a lot about retention, detention, certainly lots of people in the zoning, and you know what it is. In today's rain trends, and there- today's rain trends, and they're tracked closely by Miami Conservancy District and the U.S. Weather Bureau, it's going northwest, you know, year by year, almost on a yearly basis, we have significantly more and more rainfall. What that means is that if that trend continues, and it's likely to continue, in my opinion, those retention-detention calculations are obsolete almost as soon as a computer pukes them out for the size of retention and detention. They're designing them on current data, and tomorrow, we're not living in the land of current data. Your own environmental advisory committee, I don't know if they've weighed in yet, Beaver Creek has an environmental advisory committee? They should weigh in on this. They should weigh in on the floodplain. They should weigh in on the lighting issue, the, you know, letting you know how important it is to the community. Have they weighed in yet? Have they been given a chance, Mr. Burkett, to weigh in? So that should already be information that is planned or on its way.
We will ask the question of the city when we get asked.
My last point is, I saw, I made note of the definition of truck stop, which the attorney put in as original. I did a quick search of the ORC and OAC, Ohio Revised Code, Ohio Administrative Code. There is no definition, there is no definition of a truck stop in either the OAC or ORC. I also did a general search on the internet, and I came up with pages and pages of different definitions of what a truck stop is. So you might ask where he got, what was the source of that. Thank you.
Definitely. Well, thank you.
Hello, I'm Stephen Sell. First meeting for me here. Thanks for serving our city and the planning commission. I live at 1244 Freedom Point. That's in Hunter's Ridge neighborhood. It's about three miles from the proposed development, and we hear the downshifting every single night of the diesel trucks, so I respectfully don't gaslight us anymore. That's ridiculous. All right. So, thank you. I look forward to that. So I'm thinking about that classic movie.
Just real quick, again, we would ask the applicant, you're going to have your time to answer some of these questions, so we would kindly ask you to... Again, I would like to ask you to please sit, and you'll have your opportunity to speak.
So thinking about that classic movie, It's Wonderful Life, Frank Capra, Jimmy Stewart, Mr. Potter is a mean old banker who hates people, and he's only interested in the almighty dollar. He has disdain for the community he believes he lords over, and he thinks he's better than the people who live there. So I'm here tonight because when my wife and I heard about a diesel station going next to the soccer fields where I coached my daughter's kindergarten league soccer team, we thought it was a joke. We said the people who represent us, especially given that sad U-turn situation, they would never let that happen. So then I got word that this commission was possibly all set to approve the rezoning application, so I came straight from work here, skipped dinner, family activities for the night. I know you guys skip your family dinners every, what, once a month, so thank you. Just to make sure that our city of Beaver Creek doesn't become Pottersville, the applicant seemed to think they know it all, that everyone standing behind him, he said, that lives in Sky Crossing, the applicant should know by now, there's people from all over Beaver Creek here, and we're not going anywhere. I'm here to respectfully ask you all in the planning commission to stand up for us and do the right thing. There's people here who saved their whole lives to build homes around there and to make Beaver Creek their forever home. The applicant representatives are strident in defending their legal rights. Well, we're strident in defending our right to have a representative city government that does what's best for its citizens. We deserve a government that does not cower to powerful corporate interests represented by fancy law firms that are based 60 miles away in Cincinnati. The applicant's representatives, they don't live here. They have no reason to care about our city, and I guarantee you, not a single one of them lives within 1,680 feet of a diesel gas station. He says he does, so let's ask him. All right. So they're here today to convince you to sell out our city and turn it into a Pottersville so that they can build bigger houses down in Cincinnati or someplace else for themselves. One place where you know they're not going to build a second house is in Sky Crossing, behind the next racetrack gas station. They would not build there. I would ask, please, if you could ask them that question, would they like to build or build a house at Sky Crossing after the racetrack gas station goes up? So I'd ask that they take their generous application back down to Cincinnati and to leave us alone. Please, don't be intimidated by their fancy lawyers from Cincinnati. Don't be afraid. We're not going anywhere. We're going to fight this for as long as it takes. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Susan Marticello, 270 Rebel Court. I'm Susan Marticello from 270 Rebel Court, and I was the rebel who started the petition. I have, I represent 1,426 signatures, and I'd say 90% of them is from Green County, and like 70% of them is from Beaver Creek and the surrounding communities, like Beaver Creek Township, Alpha. And so, I mean, I just did it to see if my neighbors would do it, and I stopped it February, a little after February, because I had heard that it was not going to be a truck stop, because it was about a truck stop. So I stopped it, and I think if I had continued through February, we could have doubled the numbers, because we were going like 100, 150 a day. So anyway, so I'm representing them, but I also, like, I never had anxiety. I have anxiety going through, I have to go every day, because it's like the quickest way to go to work, and I have anxiety going through that intersection. I know we're not talking about traffic, but it's just, so one lane, you won't let trucks go in, so that's the closest. So now they have to go in the far lane, and so then they have to veer back into my lane. It's just, the idea of having to deal with one or two trucks through my intersection would drive me nuts. And then the other thing, and I, my mom was here in Missouri. She did the same thing you're doing, and we used to have things spread out on our dining table. It's standards. We have standards. Because like, growing up in DePere, Missouri, we, like, all the signs had to be certain thing, and all the, they wanted, all the buildings to look colonial because it matches the standard. I don't see, I made the Beaver Creek sign into Cement Creek, because I don't feel we're having the standards. When I moved here 20 years ago, it represented Beaver Creek, meaning a community that fosters, like, green and creek and beavers, you know, and we have deer. I mean, deer. I'm like, and where are they going now? They're running into 35 and getting hit. It's just, we need to, like, preserve who we are, Beaver Creek, Ohio, not Cement Creek, Ohio. Thank you very much.
My name is Steve Simmons. I live at 173 James River Road in Arlington Place. One of the concerns here was about the long-term, where Factory Road and 35 used to be just one traffic light. Then later, they added a left-turn lane, which helped a bit. There was still a lot of dangerous, that was where Shakertown Road had its own exit, kind of headed eastbound, and that was a big hassle. So I think the long-term solution, we do need that overpass over top of 35. Now, where I live in Arlington Place, it's about 3/4 mile as the bird flies from 35. We hear the trucks. We can also, in summer, hear kill care. And my concern here, that right next to us, you know, we've got the Rust Research Center owned by OU, and there's on the northeast corner, James River, Indian Ripple, and Alphabel is a big wooded area. Well, Oberer wants to build by that and tear all those trees down and build houses where they said the setback would be only five or 10 feet. That is a very much smaller crowded place compared to Arlington Place. And then a fellow also said, there is plans to put a new Beaver Creek High School south of Indian Ripple, which is what, 3,000 people in the high school? You can imagine what the effect will be here to increase the traffic. So this bridge over 35, where most of Beaver Creek is north of 35, some south, we need that to be an efficient crossover there. And as it is now, it doesn't work. And I would just remind you, too, that all this pollution runoff goes into Little Beaver Creek, and it goes into Little Miami River, and Little Miami is the only river in Ohio that is a national and state scenic river. Let's not destroy it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carl Childs. I'm not a resident of Beaver Creek, but as a...
Could you state your address for the record, please?
312 Randy Drive, West Carrollton. As a civil engineering instructor, I can tell you that by his site plan, your overpass will never happen. So your traffic problem that this current thing is alleviating as a temporary fix, as the gentleman presented earlier, that overpass will never happen according to his site plan. The other thing is, and the restrictions that you put on it, that overnight parking, if they leave before midnight or come after midnight, they're no longer overnight parking. You should put a time limit on that if you allow it in any way. Thank you.
Rick Solapek, 451 Crawford Drive, Tera West. I was born and raised here, 1957, actually at the north end of Factory Road, where used to be a fire station right across the street at the top of that hill. Beaver Creek's nothing like it used to be, and it's only going to go one direction. I'm not sure legally if you're going to be able to stop these guys or not, by what I've heard tonight. I think you've had all the evidence shown to you why you should stop it. If nothing else, what you might do is delay it until the Sheetz Gas Station opens up on North Fairfield, and watch what disaster that's going to be. And, you know, it's just like when you guys are talking about public safety and stuff, how could you approve that right across, right across from the Beaver Creek bowling alley? I don't understand politics anymore. I mean, it's just like the gentleman here, "Hey, we don't want to be here till 11 o'clock." Hmm, that's why we voted you here. Sorry. But you need to take care of this situation, and I think my final just thought on it, maybe it's just time to say stop. Beaver Creek was, I wish I could say is, a great community, but it really was a great community, and it's changed a tremendous amount. I understand expansion, profits, I get it all. I mean, it's, I had my own business. I had a fleet of five semis, tractor-trailers. They're loud. There's no two ways about it. You're not going to dispute it. I mean, you can argue all you want, but they're loud. And the roads they're going to travel are going to be deteriorated. That's what happened to Michigan roads because of all the tires, all the travel on them. And now I'm not sure if you guys are putting money up to replace those roads in the next five years or 10 years when they need to be replaced, or if it's going to be a situation where, I guess, maybe raise our taxes against our property taxes, maybe, something, but you're not going to get any more road improvement levies done. I mean, it's, you're heading down the wrong road. Again, I was just so shocked. My mom used to work at the IGA that was at the Sheetz Gas Station. None of you guys know it, because you might not even have been alive then. You might have been. But you might not have lived here. But the bottom line is, you know, we're so proud of Beaver Creek, and what's happening with it, and by the experts at least that have been up here have talked about the area, other than legally, I can't see how you could approve it. If you can't legally, there's not much you can do. God bless you.
Sorry, I thought she was coming up. Any other takers?
Good evening. Thank you for your time, and like the other gentleman said, we're missing your dinner and stuff at home. My name's Chris Reuter. I'm at 3735 South Brook in Beaver Creek, so not far from here. Truck noise, yes, two thumbs up, all day, every day, new windows, still here. I hadn't planned on talking, but hearing all this stuff, you know, and a lot of the sentiment of the residents, we moved to Beaver Creek, and I'm not anti-development, it's just doing it right, and like, this isn't the place for a gas station. When they started to do this disaster of whatever that intersection is there, I avoid it. I don't need to go there anymore. I used to go to the soccer fields, and now I don't, and every time I drive through there and my wife's in the car, she's like, you know, she's like in Las Vegas, and just like frightened of all the stuff going on. And I can't imagine how folks who've lived here for ages navigate that. They, like someone else said, you know, to go west, I need to go east, and there's a left. Which lane? What light? Where, what am I, there are these funny shaped lights. There's the little U-turn reds with an arrow on it, and it's, you know, you don't know what to be looking at. I would like to see one of these new modern self-driving cars navigate that without running into the ditch. So I'm not anti-development. I, you know, at first, I thought this was going to be a dog track or a horse track. Okay, a gas station maybe, but it doesn't make sense, and the whole thing about preventing the bridge over this intersection, there needs to be a solution that's worse than it was before. So anyways, yeah, like I said, I hadn't planned on talking, but it's, there's a lot more I could say, and I shouldn't go on. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
And we are going to take a quick 10-minute break, so we will reconvene at 8:00, so we can let some of our fellow members be able to take a quick break here really quick. So we are going to reconvene at 8:00.
Is that before me or after me?
That's going to be after you. Or before, I'm sorry, before you, yes.
All right. So I'm Mark Schumacher. I live at 305 Bell Watlin.
To ask everybody to take their seats here, and we're going to resume the meeting. I'd ask everybody to please take their seats, so we can resume the meeting. Apologize for the break. And I think we had a gentleman that was going to speak to us here. So if you could just say your name and address, please.
Yeah, Mark Schumacher from 305 Bell Watlin. So I'm a military retiree. I had a choice to live anywhere I wanted to live when I retired, and I decided to live here. I lived here because I love the community here. I've been here since 2013. I could have lived in Maryland. I moved to Maryland for a bit and decided, you know what, I want to come back here. I want to tell you something, though. Largest private company in America, right? Am I wrong? So they, probably will try to influence you in any way they can. I have been reading, I know that this is not their first rodeo at this, moving, doing this to other communities as well across America, one specifically in Georgia. So I just want to say, they've been down this road before. I'm also concerned, because we talk about traffic, and I know that, okay, traffic, that's not a big deal. But the big thing is, is I'm concerned, because we have a new community that's going to be built up there. And what happens with new communities? We have children, right? These are usually young people that come into these communities, and they're going to have children. Where are they likely going to go? They're going to go, they're going to ride their bikes, they're going to ride their bikes on that bike trail. How are they going to get there? I would, I appeal to the board here, to the city, to think about these things. We talk about public safety. Second public safety thing, we have a lot of traffic that comes through there with the soccer fields. We have a lot of events, we have a lot of competition. We all know, all of us here who live in that area, know that there's a lot of traffic that comes through there as well, in addition to what's already going to, what's going to be there when we move a truck stop in that location. What else can I say? We also have tacky farms who's just sold their property. We're going to have more houses in that area. So now we're going to have more traffic, we're going to have more congestion in that area. Most of us use this way, this line of communication. We use this to get to our jobs, to our locations that we want to get out to. It's going to slow us down. Think about the future. That's what I'm asking the board here. I'm asking you to think about the future of Beaver Creek, not you're short-sighted, what's going to happen with this just coming in, in the next five years. I'm talking about five, 10 years from now, when we have these other communities coming in with kids that are going to be 16, 17, riding their bikes on these roads, with semis on these roads. That is just a cause of disaster. I have been on an accident. I have been rear-ended in that new, what do we call it, crap intersection, all right? I have been a victim of that intersection. Each one of you think about it. Do you want to be held responsible for a young child getting run over by a semi when they're trying to get to their bike trail, or they're trying to go to the park, or they're trying to go to the soccer fields? I appeal to you, please. I ask you, there's another location down the road where they're building Trebine. Why not Trebine? It makes sense. They're building that overpass there. There's nobody living there, right, other than the ones that are buried six foot under, all right? Why not use that location? I appeal to the applicant. Think of another place. That, I think, would even be better for them, because there's a lot of traffic that comes through there. There's a whole new housing complex that would love to use their gas, because they're building all the housing out there on Trebine. That would be better. I rest my case.
Hi, my name is Josh Turner, and I'm at 2743 Sky Crossing Road. I am one of the young families that he had talked about, and I was asked to come up here for my community, because majority of us are new families with young children. The one thing that we liked about that area is, we saw bike trails, we were close to the soccer fields, there's bike trails across 35, and we thought, wow, this would be a great place to grow up and have our kids. And we'd be able to use these bike trails, and enjoy nature, and do it safely, hopefully, once the upgrades are actually made on the intersection that were planned years ago. I understand that the main thing is, you have to follow the law, and I understand that y'all are going to do your job there. I just ask that you not let his definition of a truck stop take off the part that says, okay, we can zone this for a gas station, but you cannot have a truck stop there. We already have truckers that park in that abandoned building illegally. What is going to keep them from doing that more, and creating more traffic? So I just appeal to you, keep the part that says, you cannot have a truck stop. If you want to put a gas station there, okay, I guess we'll have to live with it, even though there's two more a quarter mile down the road. But please keep the truck stop. Don't let him define what a truck stop is. If there's trucks there, it's a truck stop. Thank you.
My name's Pat Ramby. I live at 2848 Terra Trail. Been here for over 50 years. I'm just curious as to who, I understand they're proposing this to you guys, but who would even consider taking this any further than just them asking about doing this and changing the zone? I think if anything's going to be changed, this should be denied, and I think you should go back and see what they did in 81, and undo it all. Because I think that piece of property, it's a flood plain, it should never be built on. Environmentally, it's not good. And I'm curious as to what may be the Beaver Creek engineer would think about this going where they want to put it, with the craziness we have, with all the lights you put in, and the proposal of the overpass going to go off of Factory Road? What kind of impact is that going to have on that project? Sometimes I think you get the cart before the horse. You know, you just don't, you just get ahead of yourselves. You start doing stuff, and then it's like, oh, well, we probably shouldn't have done that. We got to tear that out and redo it, do it this way. I just think things need to be thought out more. I know you guys aren't in charge of what's going on around here, but I think you could, you know, but, but the people who are, the voters, are not going to be liking this. And the people who are up for votes to get elected, trust me, they aren't going to be in there anymore, if this project goes through, because we don't want it, and that's, that's just it. I just think enough is enough. You, when we moved here, you could not build a house on anything but a half When we moved here, you could not build a house on anything but a half acre of land. How that got changed, I don't know. Some other group decided that we can now only need, I don't know, a quarter of an acre or whatever. The houses are jammed together. You could, I could pass a cup of coffee to the guy next door. I mean, that's how close they are. You know, I think, I think that should be changed. Go back to half acres. Give more space, more green, green space. More room for kids and people. The more you, kids, you, the more houses you pack into a smaller space, the more kids you have, then you're going to want money for schools, then you're going to want money for roads. You know, we've had it. Enough, 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 enough. Like I said, these commissioners and whoever in the heck they all are that we have to vote for, I just have names. I don't know what they do. I don't know who they are, but I'm not voting for them anymore. I'm done. Thank you.
Any others?
Hello, my name is Paula Baker. I live at 2608 Brown Bark Drive in Beaver Creek. I'm 75 years old, been here since I was five years old. I don't know if anybody else is still on wells. I'm still on a well. That's a concern for me because of this. I would just ask you to please stay, at least at this time, keep the land use plan you have and then do like this other lady said, do some more research. See if you can come up with a better plan for that to stay. Because we do have an aquifer we need to be concerned about. I would just bring up one thing. I've got three words and why this bothers me. East Palestine, Ohio. And that could happen here. I hope it never does. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hope Taft and I don't live in Beaver Creek. I live at 2933 Lower Bell Brook Road. And I am here to tell you quickly, because I know you want to go home, that today's rain and the rising of the Little Miami River compelled me to be here. Because otherwise, I might not have been here. I do not live in Beaver Creek and I live downstream on the Little Miami River. And I have watched the river ebb and flow for over 10 years. I know what you do upstream really impacts what happens downstream. We have lost the equivalent of a football field worth of bank to practices people upstream don't think about anyway at all. This soil is forming a new beachhead across the river. There is no way that I can get it back because it is a national interstate scenic river and you can't put big equipment into it. I am losing land, my land, because the fill, the filling of the flood plains, the too many storm drains and the too much hardscape with their fast polluted runoff is when it downpours is what is causing all the trouble downstream. The prediction is you will get more heavy downpours or rain bombs, as they're now called, but fewer of them, which will make the effects on the river banks even worse. The river is cutting down itself at a rate of about a foot a year. And all that dirt is removed, has to go somewhere. So this is causing other parts of the river to fill with silt and sediment that causes small bass to go live someplace else. And mussels are like the canaries in the coal mine, they die. And the research tells us that their numbers of species and the numbers within the remaining species are decreasing. So our Little Miami River is in trouble. In 2022, as you've heard, we did an OSU study with the Little Miami Watershed Network. And we found that the top half of the Little Miami River has a recreational value of $15 million a year. This zone that we're talking about of the river is responsible for nearly 3 million of that. This national state scenic river is the goose that laid the golden egg and we're letting those eggs rot. Any development that fills the flood plain increases pollution, creates more hardscape, increases the flow of untreated water into the river or builds on top of the aquifer should be given extra reviews to prevent from harming the environment in ways that did not be repaired. The Little Miami River Network did research with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency in about 2022 to do a planning grant for how to help the rivers survive the best it possibly could. And we identified three of the most at-risk places along the Beaver Creek systems of the Little Beaver Creek and the Big Beaver Creek. And that place was, one of the three places is right there at the wastewater treatment plant and undermining the soccer field roads. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lori Gennizer from 2629 Payden Randolph Road. That's in Arlington Heights subdivision. You know, when I first heard about this proposal, there was like a gut reaction of, oh, no. And that was the same thing I got from all my neighbors. Many of them are here tonight. And they were very well spoken and made many valuable points. So I just want to add an underscore to what has been said already in full agreement. And I think my neighbors would represent that same point of view. But I have one other thing to say about that. We moved here from Wisconsin back in 2019. We lived in a condo up in Fairborn for a while. Because we couldn't find a house that we liked to buy or one that was available. We worked with one of the local realtor agents who's been working in this field for, I don't know if it's 30 or 40 years, well-known young, older man. And his point to us about the house that we selected was, "Good job. You picked a house, they're going to put an overpass there and that's going to increase the value of your property. It's going to clear up that intersection and make that much more desirable area." We have people now in the back half of Arlington Heights building homes that are $680,000. Do you think when they decided to do that, this is the biggest investment of most people's lives, right? So counselor, when you said that this was getting personal, that's why it's personal. The neighbors and the people that are here all feel that because they've invested a great part of their life. The people that have stood here and said they lived here 50 years and seen all these changes. We've only been here a few, but we kind of feel tricked. Like where's the overpass? If that was said and that was promised and that was put out to the business community, I think it's a matter of integrity that this board would deny this petition because that's going to interfere with the ability to do that overpass. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? With that, we will close the public hearing. And I am going to start with questions to my right to Mr. Myers.
Randy, some questions?
Yes, sir.
So just want to ask some questions. So, let's see, lighting would be addressed at a site plan if it gets to there, right? I know there's been a lot of conversation about like water runoff. That would also be addressed at a site plan if we get to that point?
Correct.
Okay. Let's see. Sorry. Actually, I have a question for Josh. So are we allowed to reserve land for a future overpass that may or may not happen? Is that allowed by the Ohio Revise Code?
So that's conjecture at this point right now. And once, you're not supposed to consider traffic in zoning decisions. So no, you wouldn't be able to consider that.
Okay, thank you. I did have a question for the applicant. I don't know, who can speak to that? So can you talk about like what goes into the underground storage tanks and like all the environmental regulation on that? Not asking for all the details, but just can you go into how regulated they are? Like it's just not throw the tank in the ground, right?
Sure.
My name is Zachary Sin. I'm with Race Track, 200 Galleria Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia. Our tanks are very robust, robust designed. They are double walled from the tanks to the piping, to the MPDs themselves. And there are sensors, so if there's any kind of leak detection, we are immediately notified and the flow is cut off from the tanks. And all of our tanks exceed Ohio and all federal regulations and stipulations.
Another question for the applicant. So let's say I had like a small diesel Jetta, right? Could that be fueled at the southern portion of this property?
Those MPDs are for diesel vehicles.
So you could fill up a little Jetta, right? With that?
They are for, yeah, for diesel.
And then are those only diesel pumps or what type of fuel is available at that southern portion?
The southern portion are diesel.
Only diesel?
And we also offer diesel in our front as well. Yeah. For that, we evolved from having just a traditional store. Our front canopies always offered diesel, has always had some from the beginning. We started getting large box trucks that use diesel and larger diesel vehicles. Race Track's mission has always been a pleasant, efficient, safe operation inside our store and around our store. And we got feedback that somebody fueling up right next to a box truck, that's not the most comfortable situation. So we evolved to our rear court extended diesel offering that offers outlet for our trucks back there that can, that can fuel up. They are designed for semis, but majority of our traffic is all small diesel trucks.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Do you want to take some?
Go here to Mr. Ayers on my left here.
All right, thank you, sir. I want to thank everybody for coming. We got a lot of letters. We had a lot of calls, emails. I even got a letter in the mail. It's the first time that's ever happened. So I want to thank the Beaver Creek Prayer Force and Robin Harris for that. But thank you guys for coming. We have heard you. I think the applicant has heard you. And what we are, again, I want to reiterate, what we were voting on tonight is a rezoning. It's not a specific site plan. It's, it is just a rezoning of the property. As it stands now, the, if the applicant wanted to put a gas station in, they could do it without this stage in the process. They could, they could submit a specific site plan and put a gas station in. And under the definition of a gas station that the applicant has, well, that's their interpretation. So I think it's important that we are here tonight, that they have come to us at this stage and that we are considering their application. So I have a question for staff.
Yes, sir.
So there've been a lot of questions tonight about the definition of a truck stop. Where is the city's definition of a truck stop?
We put it in the zoning code. The definition the applicant read is in our zoning code.
Okay. And the applicant showed photos of what I thought and believe are Amazon Sprinter vans, but characterized them as box trucks. When you created, when the city created paragraph eight of the conditions and included the term box trucks, were those Sprinter type vans that Amazon uses to deliver packages, were those included in your decision making when crafting paragraph eight?
Condition number eight relates to the allowance of vehicles to use the access point on Shaker Town. Our intent there, that was included in when considering the truck stop as well. And the intent was to keep the semis and tractor truck trailers and all that from using that access point. I spoke with the applicant about for the purposes of the access to Shaker Town, removing the box truck verbiage. And I wouldn't have a problem just for the access point. But still, it's the city's position that the area on the south is a truck stop. The south side of that proposal.
Okay, so I have a question about that as well. So the applicant has talked about the definition, the city's definition of a truck stop being primarily used for a truck stop. When I look at the map, I, it seems to me that the majority of the land being developed for this project is dedicated to a truck stop. The, it looks to me that most of the parking, most of the space on site is dedicated to trucks. How does the city, does the city have a position on an interpretation of the definition?
Okay, our interpretation is there are two separate distinct uses. There is the gas station, which is the 100% fuel, gas station. And then there's the truck stop to the south, and it's 100% truck stop. Just, I mean, it could be, I mean, if you put a storage unit next door and called it an ancillary to the gas station, that's not an allowed use in that zoning district. So even though it's primarily a gas station with the storage unit, we would still say that that's not an allowed use. So we're making a distinction between the gas station portion and the truck stop as two separate distinct uses just happen to use the same convenience store as their base.
Okay. If a gas station goes in on this property and the city wants to put an over, or the state wants to put an overpass in, are there still avenues to do that, like eminent domain?
But eminent domain exists in Ohio.
And that, and they could be used for that purpose? Yes. If the state required land for an overpass, they could take that land.
And to point out, the super street, the project, that was not a city of Beaver Creek project. That was a state of Ohio project. It was their decision to go from the overpass that they had planned to the super street project. That didn't come from the city. We weren't a part of that.
So where we are in the process, just for clarity's sake, is?
Again, we're on the rezoning portion and it's basically consolidating two separate zoning districts. One being a B3 and one being a PUD with a B3 underlying into one unifying PUD. So in both of the B3 and the PUD with the B3, vehicle service stations concurrently is a currently approved use. But truck stop is not.
And, and the conditions that are proposed in the resolution are clarifying?
It does clarify that a truck stop is not permitted. Condition number five, that was the intent of that.
So if it is approved tonight, then it would be a, then it would be in the, in what we approved, in the resolution, that no truck stop could be put on premise?
That would be your recommendation to city council, yes.
Thank you. I've got a question for the applicant.
Sure.
Sir, thank you. I think a lot of people had questions about your sound study. So if you, and the sound of semi trucks. So if you just want to take a moment and discuss that.
I'd like to clarify, the comment about sound dissipation was talking about sounds that would be emitted from the Race Track facility. When you conduct a sound study, you take ambient level readings initially, which would be, you take the readings theoretically at the border of the residential district. You take it at, which is Sky Crossing, you take it at the border of Terrace Falls. I think that's the name. And you get the sound readings and you usually do it in a DBA scale. that's the name, and you get the sound readings, and you usually do it in a DBA scale, which is the preferred, and I'm not disputing what they're saying, I think there's, the clarification is, they have confirmed what I already suspected. They're hearing significant sound pressures from US 35 today, and if a sound study were to be conducted, I am pretty confident that you're going to have ambient levels that are fairly significant. Significant, and I'm just speaking now anecdotally, okay, could be 50 DBA scale, alright, so that these people are probably hearing sound pressures in a 50 range, which is candidly conversation level right now, maybe without the mic, and, and by way of example, like HVAC, your air conditioning units are higher than that, they could be like 60 and the like. Then, what my statement is, if we do conduct a sound study, which we're willing to do, again, it's usually not done at this stage of a project, because this is not usually a pure rezoning concept, this is more of a final site plan, so you can then discuss mitigation factors like buffering or whatever, but if we did do a sound study, I'm fairly confident, based on my analysis of other Race Track sites, that the sound pressures they emit will dissipate or become subsumed within the ambient background noise of US 35. And that, that's my premise, and that's what I was trying to discuss. So, I wasn't, I was, I, I apologize if I was incorrectly understood to mean they're not hearing sound. They're hearing sound, I know that from US 35. I've been at that intersection of Shaker Town and Bell Brook and stood there in the middle of the afternoon, and I can hear it. So, and I've participated in sound studies, so I have a generalized sense of, if the methodology is to take some ambient readings at that residential district border, 1,600 feet approximately from the center of our site, 2,300 feet from our site over by Terrace Falls, we're going to get ambient readings right now, and I'm, and I'm going to bet they're significant. And then, by a math formula, using other Race Track sites where they have done true sound studies on-site, because obviously you'd have to wait till this was built to do the true sound study, but by comparable sites, you're going to get a sound reading off there, and that sound pressure will dissipate or be subsumed within the ambient sound. That's the best way I can explain it, I hope that makes sense. And by the way, they use like pink noise too, they can use, they can emit a pink noise at a certain decibel level equivalent to what a Race Track facility would emit. Again, but we haven't done that because at a stage one, this is not a typical study, but I, I understand, I'm listening to, I want the audience to understand, we are listening to constructive comments, and we are trying to digest them in a way that we can respond to them, and one of the things that I also wanted to correct was, oh, peak hour, when I use the number of 10 trucks in, 10 trucks out versus 200 cars into, that's the peak hour. Peak hour is like around, I believe, 7 to 8 o'clock AM approximately, 4:30 to 5:30. That's not 24/7. When they do a, a traffic study, it's at peak hour. And, and, and with a segue, could I, could I bring up the traffic engineer so she can explain the status? They are doing traffic studies. You don't need, not necessary?
Yeah, we don't need that right now, thank you though.
Okay. What was the other point? Peak hour? Huh? I just, I want to make sure I answered all the audience's questions. Okay, yeah, I think I, I covered that. I'm sure somebody will remind me in the audience if I didn't, but can I, can I volunteer something?
Quickly, yes.
To the planning commission? We are digesting these comments, and to those who wish to participate, I talked to the client, we will stay after the meeting, however you vote, and I want to say that before you vote, so however you vote, and then, we welcome if some community leaders would volunteer to talk with us, because we want to discuss a couple of the issues which we think we can do, which have nothing to do with rezoning, but more anticipation of like final site plan. So, I, I, I say that so that we will stay. Zach will stay, I will stay, and if you don't want to talk to me tonight, my phone number's on the application, and what we're thinking is, is if we can have some kind of a meeting with, and we don't know who the heads of state here, I mean, there's a lot of bodies, so I don't want to insult somebody and have them designated, but we would be willing to do that and follow up regardless of how you vote tonight, because I know that there is a, you know, there's, there are a lot of comments here, and we just can't address them all, but we want to make the effort so that they understand, maybe we can address something, but I don't know what to do tonight in the confines of the hearing, so.
Wonderful. Well, yeah, I, I am glad that the voice of everybody who's here and everybody who sent a letter has been heard, I appreciate that, and I am sure there are some city leaders watching on TV right now who will take you up on that.
Okay, thank you.
But we are, we are appointed, not elected, so it's not us.
Yeah, it's a big check you get at the end of the month, I'm sure.
Yeah, so, we volunteer a lot of hours for this.
Alright, thank you.
So, thank you very much. I don't, I have no other questions.
We're just going to keep moving around the table here to the left, just got it.
I'm the new guy, so I've just got one question here. Randy? Is there anything about this development that violates the land use plan?
The truck stop portion?
Just the truck stop portion. The gas station portion does not. And if I understand the process correctly, an environmental study would be required at the point of when a, an official site plan is submitted? When does that happen?
Typically, we don't have an environmental study done. They'll have to meet all Ohio EPA regulations and US EPA regulations when they, they come in. I mean, that's a separate permit that they're going to have to get from the state of Ohio and...
Okay.
And they'll have to go through a floodplain permit, which is through the city, and meet all the regulations in the floodplain, all the requirements of the floodplain regulation. But, yeah, the, the gas tank, the underground storage tanks and the like are handled by the Ohio EPA.
Okay, last question. This overpass I keep hearing about, is this something that the state would initiate, or is this something the state works with the city on?
It's a state highway. This would be a state, I mean, it would be a state project, not, not a city project.
Okay. Alright, that's all I've got. Thanks.
I'll go ahead and start with you, since, since you're already up here. VPA 92, would you be able to put that back up on the screen there for me? Really specifically looking at the wording that's in VPA 92 as far as the, the uses?
Yeah, that's on the left, left hand, that's the verbiage there for the VPA.
Commercial, office, and residential, that was the, that was the intent for...
Right.
That CPUD. What do truck stops fall under as far as zoning code in the City of Beaver Creek? What, what use code?
Truck stops are only permitted in I-1 and I-2, which isn't light industrial and heavy industrial districts.
And are there any adjacent properties that would fall in that, that category?
Give me a second here to get back to the zoning map. You can see on the very far north, on the other side of the street, there is this very small I-1 property, but that's, I think that's in the river, so. I don't think that that, I, I don't think anything's going to happen there.
Looks like an easement more than anything, probably access or something.
That's, that's not going to, nothing's going to happen there. That's, that's some floodway, not just floodplain, which there's a distinction. You can see the red hashed lines there on the floodplain map. That's the floodway, and it's nearly impossible to do anything in the floodway.
Okay. So, just to reiterate, a truck stop would be an I-1 or an I-2 usage?
In our zoning code, under the, under the table of permitted uses, you can only do truck stops in I-1 and I-2.
Okay. I had a question for the city attorney, actually, if he could just, if he could read a specific part of the zoning code for us, so myself and all the commissioners are aware, but looking specifically at 158.072, sections A, B, and C.
So, B1, A, B, and C are what might be?
So, 158.072, B1, A, B, and C. A, B, and C are the factual basis upon which you can exclude a specifically permitted or accessory use within a CPUD. So, if you're going to exclude a permitted use, it has to be based upon, and bear with me, I'm going to read it to you. A, and this is going to be a run-on sentence, so I'll, I'll do every one of the semicolons so you know they stand alone. Cannot be serviced by adequate public utilities, semicolon, or presents a potent, the potential for significant environmental damage, and a satisfactory plan of mitigation has not been provided by the applicant, semicolon, or in, or is inconsistent with the overall character and other uses of the proposed PUD, semicolon, or is inappropriate for the topography of the site, semicolon, or is incompatible with surrounding legal land uses or other approved land uses, semicolon, or is incon... Sorry. Or is inconsistent with the city's land use plan or other approved plans of the city, semicolon, or will create hazardous traffic conditions, semicolon, or will impose an unmitigated burden on public services and facilities such as fire and police protection. So, I just want to specifically point out that inconsistency with the city's land use plan is listed as one of those reasons. 1B, will not promote the propos, the purpose and objectives of the planned unit development provision of this code, or, and the final provision C, does not advance the general welfare of the community and the immediate vicinity, and will adversely affect or impact adjoining or surrounding development without satisfactory mitigation or measure. So, if there's going to be a, a use that's specifically excluded, and it sounds like truck stop is one of those that's in debate here, I would just ask that you give specific findings that are compatible with one of those, and once again, I'm not trying to influence you, but if, the, the decision is to exclude, because that's in the proposed resolution, I'd find, I'd ask that you have those specific findings.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. I do have one question for the applicant. So, you've, you've brought up the 1,600-foot center line, what's the actual back lot line to, to where you're actually measuring? What's, what's the real distance from the back part of that property versus the, the center line? Because the diesel trucks are not going to be parking in the middle of the building, they're going to probably park towards the neighborhoods, which is where you've got them oriented. Do you know what that is?
Is it on?
I did a, I did a map.
Right. Do you want to speak to it, Randy?
I don't know that Randy's got that information or not.
Oh, I just, I just did as, as a crow flies.
Yeah.
And I can't read those numbers from here. I believe one is 16 and one is 14. 13 and 16, that's just to the building itself, so that didn't, I had already excluded the, the truck stop portion of the site when I did those numbers.
Okay, what's the lot depth? Do you know?
Lot depth?
Like, how, how deep is that lot?
Oh.
Really just trying to determine, because we keep using these numbers, but they're, they're really not relevant. They're, they're more relevant to where's the most, most northern part of the property?
That's probably an additional 200 feet.
Okay. So, we're looking at more like 11, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, we were, you're sort of spitballing on a Google Maps, trying to get that measurement, so, you know, I said approximate, and I think we tried to put it right in the middle of the site.
Okay. The only other thing that I had, I cannot do any of these, but something, just a comment from my other commissioners, do with what you will. The section, I believe it is, section eight, or I'm sorry, should be a section five, the recommendation number five. Should we further define, if, again, if we were going to make any changes to this, should we further define the definition of parking to include a dwell time limit to be included in that covenant as well? Just as a way to further define that, because your definition of parking and my definition of parking might vary wildly from how long they would be allowed to dwell, just to further define, because the word parking, what, what does that mean? If we're, if, if we are specifically excluding a use, would we want to tighten that up? I don't know if that makes sense or not, but I cannot put forward any changes to these, so that is my piece. Anyone else with any other questions up on the dais?
Josh, just on that point, parking is that, that's a pretty defined term, right? I mean...
So, I believe that, that terminology is taken directly from the definition of a truck stop?
Oh, so there is a legal definition, okay.
Well, within the, maybe the... So, in the definition of a truck stop, it talks about fueling or parking of truck tractors, tractor-trailers, semi-trailers, or similarly, similar heavy commercial vehicles, so I believe that is almost verbatim. Fueling or parking of truck tractors, tractor, I mean, is, it is a copy from the, the definition of a truck stop. So, it's saying it's not allowed there.
Okay, so basically, it's five minutes, 24 hours, doesn't matter, it's a, it's just a not allowed period regardless of dwell time. Okay. And I, never mind. Anyone else with any other questions? With that, I am going to need a vote.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would motion to amend paragraph eight to exclude the term "box truck."
I will need a second if that new motion is to carry.
Mr. Chair, second.
And with that, we will need a separate vote to change the recommendation.
Mr. Francis. Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes. Motion carries. amended section will be updated. With that, I will need a motion.
And once again, Mr. Loftus, if there's going to be the exclusion under number five of truck stops, I'd just like the, you guys to have a factual finding on why that exclusion is being made.
Right.
Using those.
Yeah, so, so my, the, the exclusion, so the reason to keep it in would be the, the section that I cited earlier, which is 158.072, sections A and B specifically, that it's, yeah, it's incompatible with the land use plan as stated. The VPA 92 does state, commercial, residential, and office retail, says nothing about industrial uses, which would be incompatible with the current land use plan that has been put forth by the city.
Alright, thank you very much. Josh, for, for the record, can we also add traffic safety considerations and environmental considerations?
I mean, so those are conjecture at this point. We don't have anything that would, that would back those things up, so I don't think that those would be... So, you guys can do whatever you want, once again, but I'll withhold that. But incompatible with the land use plan, I think, has been established by Mr. Burkett's testimony and the information provided.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 23-4 with the attached nine conditions as amended.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
And with that, I will need a roll call.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes. Motion carries for zero. We are actually, that was the one and only item that was on the docket today. With that, I will need a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I would motion to adjourn the March Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chair, second.
And we'll do that by general consensus.
You failed us all. You failed us all. You failed the committee.